The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Cohn. Nineteen present.
A quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor Brandon Blake of New Sunny Mount Missionary Baptist Church.
Thank you for creating this space and time for us to pray. Let us pray. Oh God, I hope in ages past, I hope in years to come, I shelter from the stormy blast and our eternal home. We come to you with the spirit of thanksgiving. I am grateful and thankful, God, for each person who has convened here on today. I am grateful for each alderperson representing their constituents. I pray, oh God, that you give them physical health and strength and endurance, and also more character and integrity as they lead. I ask for forgiveness, God, for ways that we have failed you. I pray, oh God, that this group remains open to new ideas and innovations that will positively impact our city. And in places where they disagree, let the decision be in toward compassion for those with less, instead of we who live with more. May you be pleased by the results in these proceedings. In Christ's name I pray.
Let's give Pastor Blake a round of applause. And welcome to St. Louis. Pastor Blake comes to us by way of Memphis and also Mississippi. Believe, he is a new pastor and a young pastor, so I'm really looking forward to his tenure here in St. Louis. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the 27th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize my honored guest, Mr. Frederick Cersey, Director of Minority Training with the Union.
Alderman from the 7th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, bear with me. I've got a list here. I'd like to have as my honored guest today Keith Taylor and Kevin Haynes from the Carpenter's District Council, David Sweeney and Sinette Magnus from Lewis Rice, a downtown law firm, and my good friend Jeff Abusi. Thank you.
Alderman from the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest today Ms. Stephanie Robinson from AmeriUe. Thank you.
Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize today my good friend, Mr. Noel Pfeffer, who's back in town, who used to be a permanent fixture down here, and now is in New York. So, welcome back. And then also my good friend Amy Rice from the neighboring 8th Ward over there.
Alderman from the 21st.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have Ms. Nicole Burden, the Executive Director of the Civilian Oversight Board.
Alderwoman from the 14th.
Good morning. Mr. President, I'd like to have as my honored guest Nathan Lett from Local 73 Firefighters Union, and Clinton McBride from the Laborers Union.
Alderman from the 22nd.
Good morning, Mr. President. Members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest Mr. Leroy Grant and Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T, and Mr. Kenneth Franklin with Metro or By State.
Alderman from the 22nd. Lady Gales.
Absolutely. I thought that might be your special guest. I am certainly honored to be able to introduce Ms. Merdeen Gales, a well-renowned gospel artist, and also the daughter of one of my oldest constituents, who will be 102 on January the 26th, Mr. Oakley Clark. So, welcome, Ms. Merdeen Gales. And Mr. Gary Boyd, the host of Them Your People. Sorry, Them Yo' People.
Just a bit of trivia, if you go to Google and you put "King of Hospitality" in, just that word, that phrase, "King of Hospitality," first person that pops up is Gary Boyd. So, he's making a mark all across the United States now that he is syndicated, and we're so proud and honored to have Gary and also Merdeen with us. Thank you so much for coming today, and thank you so much for what you've done to keep the Martin Luther King Holiday Weekend alive, and telling people that it's a day on, not a day off. So, let's give them a big round of applause. Also, if you're looking for your Martin Luther King holiday buttons, see Gary Boyd or Lady Gales over here, and they will be able to assist you with that. Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I'm my own special guest today. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 6th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome Anthony Lancia as my special guest with AGC.
All right, welcome, Anthony. Alderman from the 23rd.
Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to have as my special guest today Elliot Davis. Normally, we're running from him, but I want to thank Elliot for all the work he's been doing out there with the homeless people, and I'm glad to see him here today, and I'd like to have him as my special guest.
Welcome. Any further announcements? Any further? Alderman from the 10th, you wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, we gathered here on January 12th. On this day in 1959, Barry Gordy Jr. borrowed $800 to start a little record company called And 10 years later, on this day, it was the eve of Jeffrey Boyd's birthday. Which one is more important? I'll let you folks decide. Thank you.
I love it. We dispense with line item, line item five. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all aldermen's mailboxes. I have this correspondence from our Honorable Mayor. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Dutch Town Community Improvement District Board: the appointment of Stephanie Lemer, who resides in the 12th Ward, and the appointment of Mr. Brandon Jacobson, who resides in the 25th Ward. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Lyda Kusen, Mayor of St. Louis.
Alderwoman from the 20th, you recognize an alderman's appointment to the Dutch Town Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the appointment, the approval of the appointment of the Dutch Town said.
Move by Alderman from the 20th. Second about Alderman from the 13th. Any discussion? Alderman in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
We dispense with line item seven. At the request of Alderman from the 23rd, please place Resolution 169 as amended on the tail end of the second reading resolution calendar.
So noted.
Would anyone take, Alderman from the 22nd?
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to move Board Bill 190 to the third reading final passage consent calendar.
Is there some objection to that? Would you like to move it to the regular third reading calendar?
Yes, please move Board Bill 190 to the regular third reading and final passage calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Place Board Bill 190 on the regular third reading calendar, on the tail end of the regular third reading calendar. Any further requests? Any further requests? We dispense with the balance line items eight through 10. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 228, sponsored by Alderman Kotar, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 701 through 705 North First Street. Board Bill 229, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 3450 Oregon. Board Bill 230, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 3024 Potomac. Board Bill 231, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 3548 South Broadway. Board Bill 232, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance enlarging boundaries of the Port Authority of the City Port District, subject to the approval of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, authorizing certain actions and connection therewith. Board Bill 233, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen, Alderwoman Pam Boyd, Alderman Bosley, Moore, Davis, Williamson, Jeffrey Boyd, Kennedy, Middlebrook, Mohammed, Hubbard, Gunther, and President Reed, and Alderwoman Spencer. And ordinance amending ordinance 69984, which established the City of St. Louis Civilian Oversight Board, known as the COB, to empower the COB to issue subpoenas and to compel the appearance of witnesses to produce documents, recordings, and other evidence with the COB, which the COB determines in its reasonable judgment are relevant and necessary to its through inspection and review of complaints of misconduct by members of the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department, which may be subject to the COB independent investigation. Board Bill 234, sponsored by Alderman and Alderwomen, Bosley, Pam Boyd, Moore, Davis, Williamson, Jeffrey Boyd, Kennedy, Middlebrook, Mohammed, Hubbard, Gunther, President Reed, and Alderwoman Spencer, and ordinance authorizing the Circuit Attorney's Office to assume responsibility for investigating possible criminal contact arising from or in relation to covered officers' involvement in use of force incidents resulting in a death or grave bodily injury to a person, establishing an independent investigations unit within the office of the Circuit Attorney's Office for this purpose with an annual budget in an amount equal to 1% of the annual budget of the City Division of Police and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 135, sponsored by Alderman. Board Bill 235, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, pursuant to ordinance 68937, and ordinance authorizing honorary naming of streets. Pastor Stephen Shepherd Lane will begin at the intersection of Shreve and Margarita and run west on Margarita to Marcus. Board Bill 236, sponsored by Alderman Vacaro, and ordinance establishing a four-way stop site at the intersection of Clifton Avenue and Olitha, regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Clifton at Olitha, and regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Clifton at Olitha, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 137, 237, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed and Alderman Bosley, pursuant to ordinance 68937, and ordinance authorizing honorary naming of streets. Patricia Breeze Campbell Way will begin at the intersection of Grand and St. Louis and run west on St. Louis to the intersection with Dodier. Board Bill 238, sponsored by Alderwoman Martin, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 6132 and 7600 Vermont Avenue, and 7806 and 7810 Virginia. That's the extent of our first readings.
Alderman from the 23rd, you recognized.
Board, I found a Courtney Shepherd is my special guest. She was at the doctor this morning, and she's got a sty in her eye, but she's feeling better. But she's my special guest today.
Well, welcome, Courtney. How you doing? Reference to committee.
To the Transportation Committee, Board Bill 232. To the Streets Committee, Board Bills 235, 236, and 237. To the Public Safety Committee, Board Bills 233 and 234. To the Housing Committee, Board Bills 228 and 231. And to the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bills 229, 230, and 238. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of Streets Committee, Board Bill 203, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Spencer, Cohn, Williamson, Kotar, Davis, Gunther, and Ingracia, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service of the City, establishing multiple public works improvement projects within the city. Board Bill 215, sponsored by Alderman Oldenburg, and ordinance authorizing and ordinance establishing a three-way stop site at the intersection of Devonshire and Childress, regulating all traffic traveling westbound on Devonshire at Childress, and regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Childress at Devonshire, and containing an emergency clause the following. Board Bill was reported out of the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Board Bill 126, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance adopted pursuant to the Intergovernmental Agreement Acts, multiple sections inclusive of the revised Statute of Missouri, and authorizing the city to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Metropolitan Sewer District for the purpose of sharing certain water data in the possession of the city with the Metropolitan Sewer District for fair and substantial compensation received by the Metropolitan Sewer District, containing a severability clause and a governance clause. The following board bill was reported out of the Legislation Committee, Board Bill 193, sponsored by President Reed, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Bosley, Mohammed, Vacaro, and Honowitz, and ordinance amending ordinance 69429 by repealing Section 2 and Section 3 of that ordinance and enacting a new Section 2 and a new Section 3 pertaining to the same subject matters and containing an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill 227, sponsored by Alderman Honowitz, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to enter into and execute an agreement or agreements with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the receipt of LED Hazard Reduction Demonstration Grant Funds, appropriating the sum of $2,100,000, which the city has been awarded for the LHRD program, authorizing and directing the Director of the Community Development Administration to contract with municipal agencies, nonprofit corporations, and other entities for the expenditures of the LHRD funding, and directing the comptroller to issue warrants thereon upon the Treasury, City Treasury, and containing an emergency clause. Following board bill was reported out of Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 224, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance recommended by the Airport Commission and Board of Public Service and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute an agreement and contract of sale for property between St. Louis and Union Electric Company, doing business as Ameren Missouri, providing for the sale of approximately 1.3994 acres of property for the sum of $80,000, the quick claim deed to the agreement entitled Form of Quick Claim Deed for St. Louis Property, and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 225, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute the First Amendment to the restated and amended lease agreement AL 223 between the City and Signature Flight Service Corporation, amending restated and amended lease agreement AL 232 dated June 25, 2013. The First Amendment was approved by the Airport Commission, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 226, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller of the City, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute the First Amendment to the lease agreement AL 222 between the City and MHS Travel and Charter Incorporated, amending the lease agreement AL 222 dated June 25, 2013, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. That is the extent of our second readings.
Dispense with line item 14 through 16. Third reading consent.
Board Bills 208 and 209, that's the extent of third reading consent.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize a motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the 18th. Entertaining second on that motion. Second about Alderman from the 26th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Davis. 27 ayes votes.
By a vote, you stay in the motion. Alderman from the 18th, and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills.
That's the extent of third reading consent.
Third reading, report of engrossments.
Board Bill 190. Board Bill 190, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and ordinance pertaining to the administration and use of the Parking Meter Fund and repealing subsection B-2 of Section 2 of Ordinance 70611.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill 190.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for a third reading, final passage of Board Bill 190.
Second, a move by Alderman from the 22nd. Second about Alderman from the 23rd. Alderman, please proceed.
Mr. President, we went over all of this last week. This is a very simple cleanup of Board Bill 92. What Board Bill 190 does, it makes it very clear that at the end of the fiscal year, whatever revenue is in the parking revenue fund, that the City of St. Louis gets 40% and the Parking Commission keeps 60%. It makes it very clear that the Parking Commission shall not take depreciation. In the past, the Parking Commission was taking depreciation out of the revenue that was generated and left over prior to giving the 40%. That's disingenuous, and it's really cheating of taxpayers. Last year, there was roughly almost, it was 2.8, and let's call it $3 million, that was taken for depreciation for fiscal year 2017. The city missed out on almost $1.4 million towards the general revenue fund. It's not a good practice. It's been going on for years, and it's time to make it clear. The state statute is very clear on what the deductions are before you do the 40/60 split, and depreciation is not part of it.
All right, thank you. Any further, Alderwoman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, if the Alderman from the 22nd would yield, please.
Alderman from the 22nd, will you yield for questioning?
Absolutely.
Alderman from the 1st, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alderman, what is depreciation? When you say depreciation, what are you speaking to?
Depreciation of assets according to the audit done by KMG on behalf of the Parking Commission.
So, what you're saying, she, the, not, I'm sorry, Treasurer's Office has been doing, is that before they give us money, they're taking a depreciation of all their assets?
Correct.
And do you take depreciation in accounting procedures? Are you familiar with accounting procedures?
I am.
And do you take depreciation?
Yes, but we're not talking about, this happens before all of those calculations, Alderwoman. We're talking about revenue that was generated, and you and I, if we were in business together, we get to split the revenue. Now, if you're going to take depreciation, that's good for tax purposes.
You got way ahead of me. I asked you a question. Let me ask the question, and then you can answer. So, I asked you if you were familiar with depreciation.
I am.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, okay? And you say she depreciated assets, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And is there more than one way to do accounting principles? Do you know that? Have you, are you familiar with that?
I'm sure there are different ways.
Okay, and so, different accountants do things differently. That doesn't make it illegal, it just makes it different, different standards that have been set up, is that correct?
But it can achieve different results.
I didn't, again, you don't want to answer my questions. I really wish you were on the stand, because I would have the judge direct you to please answer the questions I ask you. So, different accounting.
But it's not a judicial process.
But we are. That's the problem. We don't act like we pass.
But it's a legislative process.
But we pass laws, and I'm not asking you, I'm asking you to answer my questions, okay? So, my next question, again, my question is, if you're familiar with the fact that you can do different accounting procedures?
I'm sure you can.
Okay, and that doesn't make it illegal, it makes it different, right?
I would support that.
Okay, and you also said that, that this has been, the way that the current treasurer is doing it, this has been going on for years and years. Do you know how long? Did you do any research about how long they've been doing it this way?
I did not, and here's the reason why. Because I'm a new commissioner on the Parking Commission, so I have no real history with the prior treasurer, and I can only go by the data that I have today. And so, what I'm examining is current data.
Well, I would like to submit to you that you, the data that you have today is not all the available data, that in fact, that is part of what you do when you are a legislative research analyst, or lawyer, or a member of the Board of Aldermen, because I do it all the time. You go back and say, let's look and see how long this has been going on. I think I told you all last week, or the week before, that I have been doing the legislative research about, because this whole Parking Commission thing has, gave me pause to question it. So, I started doing the research of why we have the Parking Commission with the treasurer. Lo and behold, the Board of Aldermen and the City of St. Louis and mayor asked for this to happen many years ago, back in the 50s, okay? Nobody brought that up. So, if you're talking about this terrible way to do business, and this is an incorrect procedure, and it should be done a different way, I just wanted to know if you had taken the time to find out why, how long has it been done, and why it was being done that way?
First of all, I never said it was a terrible way. It's not a fair practice.
Why isn't it a fair practice?
And notwithstanding how it was done in the past, I'm not concerned about that. I'm concerned about how do we fix a broken system today? Because if I go and dig deeper, then I'll be asking for revenue for the past several years that the city missed out on that we should have.
And you wouldn't get it. But the reason why.
Well, we don't know that.
You wouldn't get it, and the reason why I asked you.
You don't know everything.
No, I know that you wouldn't get this. I know a lot more than you do about board and office.
Well, only a court of law would prove that.
So, here's what, my question is, the reason why I brought it up in the first place is because you are the person that said this has been going on for a long time. I would not have questioned it. When you bring some, a subject matter to the forefront, be prepared to be questioned about how it's being done. So, if you say it's been going on for a long time, don't put that in there, then I wouldn't ask you that question, okay? So, I do know that.
No, it's not okay.
All right. Going on to the next thing. So, you don't know if this was something agreed upon by the city, or something that was just done by a previous treasurer, but is it your statement that it has been done in the past before this current treasurer?
It's my understanding it was done in the past the same way.
Okay. And the past treasurer we had was here for 30 years, thereabout, is that correct?
I don't know.
Well, I do, because I remember when he was appointed. I was working at St. Louis University with his daughter, and it was in 1980, I want to say 2, 3, something like that. So, I think it was 3. So, and he left in 2003, so it would have been right at 30 years that he had been the treasurer. Were you here at the Board of Aldermen during that time?
Absolutely not.
Any of that time? I beg your pardon?
Absolutely not, and you know I wasn't.
You were not here, and you came here and when, 2003?
That's correct.
I sure do know. You know why I know, too. You of all people know, if you're nobody else.
I assume it's because you brought me here.
No, I didn't say I brought you, but I sure was a big factor.
You were a help.
And I endorsed you and how you got here.
And thank you so much. I appreciate that.
I know you do not. You do not appreciate it at all. You're not the person that you know.
Hold on, Alderwoman and Alderman, let's stick to the bill that's before.
I will, if he will, because I have questions.
Not elections, okay?
And I will continue to.
Please continue, but we're not going to talk about past elections.
Well, then tell him to stop, because that's not.
All right, both, please, no past elections, let's talk about the bill.
So, you got here in 2003, right?
Correct.
And since you, and you were, have you been on Streets Committees ever since that time?
I have.
Okay. And you said something about the way that the current process was done, that it wasn't fair?
That's correct.
And so, can you tell me why, in your interpretation, why it's not fair, please?
Because the state statute only allows for. Because the state statute only allows for certain deductions, and it does not include depreciation, that's a fact.
Does the state statute says, specifically say it does not include depreciation?
The state statute is very clear on the limited deductions, which is capital as well as debt. That's it, after capital and debt. It doesn't include anything about personnel, operations, any of that, which I'm sure you have read, the state statute.
Oh, but you said I don't know everything, but thank you for that.
You don't.
But I do know that, but you know that I read.
Absolutely.
And that I, so my question again is, does it prevent the, that manner?
Yes.
And so it specifically says thou shall not use depreciation, is that what it says?
It gives you specific instructions on what the deductions are.
No, it says what it can does. I ask, my question is, does it prevent? Those are two different questions.
I would think it prevents it.
Okay, you would think it was, so, but we got things from the city councilor, the assistant city councilor, telling us, in fact, the Alderman from the twenty-third is gonna come, brought us something that says that the city councilor wrote, well, it doesn't say you couldn't do it, so maybe you can. So that's an inconsistent approach. I disagree with that thing, okay? So I'm probably more in agreement with you about things, but there are some legal interpretations that say that if it doesn't prevent it, if it doesn't say you cannot, then maybe you can, is what I want you to know.
Okay.
I'm probably more in line with you.
Okay.
So, but it does not prevent the treasurer from doing it, and that's what I'm trying to make the point.
Okay, let me accept that, let's move on.
Okay, there you go, okay. Well, but you talked about this fairness kind of thing, so what you consider fair is, why, why don't you consider it fair? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Because depreciation is cheating the city out of revenue. You're talking about one point four million dollars that could go to a social service, public safety, all kind of issues that were dealing in the City of St. Louis programs that would uplift the quality of life of people in these distressed neighborhoods. The city could use that revenue, and if there's an opportunity for us to legally receive more revenue for the general fund, I think it should be a hallelujah moment.
So, I don't like the term that you use cheating, because that implies that you're doing something illegal or immoral, and different is not illegal or moral, so I disagree with that term. So what you're saying is that the city does not get as much revenue if you do it one accounting method versus the other? Is that correct?
You know, here's my understanding of how, and this was explained to me from Ms. Michelle Smart, who is the, I guess, the county manager in the Parking Commission Division. The Parking Commission runs a cash-based system, which makes all the sense in the world. Here's our revenues, here's our expenses. At the end of the year, they dump all that data into an accrual-based system. Before you dump all that data in that accrual-based system, the city should get its fairest share of that revenue that has been generated. If there's ten million dollars left in that fund, the city should get four million dollars, not two point something because depreciation was taken. And that's the whole point of this.
That was not my question, so.
That's okay.
Okay, I know it's not, because you said you would answer my questions, and so what, you're doing an expounding on what you think, and what I'm trying to get to is an understanding of the points that I have, and I wanna make sure before I speak to it, that I understand specifically what you're saying. So, again, I will ask that same question and see if you can answer my question.
I'm sorry, ask the question again?
So, you says, as you, as I understand what you're talking about fairness, you feel that it's unfair to do the accounting procedure one way versus another one, not that it's cheating the city, 'cause I disagree and I reject that term, because cheating means that you're doing something illegal or immoral and unethical, and I don't think so, and especially when something has been going on this long, that it's a standard accounting procedure that the treasurer's been using, I will not use cheating as a term. Sometimes you do, let me say it, so I want you to understand this, I of all people always think that just 'cause you always done something, don't mean you continue to do it. That's one of my challenges, okay? But that doesn't mean the person was cheating it, it's just maybe not the best way to do it. So in your opinion, this is not the best way for the city, because we don't get as much revenue, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, and so can I ask you a question? Why do you think all these other years that we didn't challenge that the city has not had money for a long time? Why has that been going along for so many years? Can you, do you have any opinion?
Well, that would only be my commentary. What I would like to speak to is the fact. The fact is, this is my first year on the Parking Commission, this is my first year as chairman of Streets, Refugees and Traffic. As the chairman of that committee, I have a responsibility and a duty to serve as a commissioner on the Parking Commission. In serving in that capacity, it was incumbent upon me to understand the mechanics and the operations of that office the best I can. Some of the things I discovered were ways that they did business for years that wasn't the right way of doing business. It wasn't the best practices that we hear out of that office, out of the Treasurer's Office, for example, best practices. Therefore, I've had certain findings, like money was being spent that was never appropriated legally, that this depreciation's been taken before the sixty forty split. So that's where I am today, and that's how I got involved in this, due to my capacity serving as Parking Commissioner and Chairman of Streets, Refugees and Traffic.
And so, of course, because you're saying the city wants more money, which I'm so glad that you think in your capacity of the chair of the Parking Commission, which is just a, 'cause as I understand-
Correction, I'm chairman of Streets.
I mean, the chairman of Streets, and you sit on the Parking Commission.
Correct.
That, that is just, is that not still under a lawsuit about saying that that shouldn't even exist as it does now? Is there a lawsuit going on about that?
That's correct.
So, that chairman of Streets being on the Parking Commission is a side job, which you may or may not have when this lawsuit is done.
That's correct.
So your permanent job is about streets, traffic and refuse.
That's correct.
So I'll be glad when you come with the refuse part of it, because that's one of the biggest problems in all of North St. Louis, and so I'm looking forward to you taking the target at your main job, which is how they cheat us out of revenue, and we increase the price of picking up trash, and yet they don't pick it up in North St. Louis. So I cannot wait for you to really get into that part of it, instead of doing your side job.
Well, I'd like to have your support on that.
You already have, I'm the main person.
And I'd like for you to initiate it.
When the Alderman of, the eighth former Alderman got up and told you something that wasn't true about who paid for dumpsters, I got up and challenged him, and he never got up and said I wasn't telling the truth, because I, of course, produced it for him.
I would entertain a resolution sponsored by you to do the deep dive into the refuse.
Oh, no, 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 I want you to go to those same people who are so adamant after going after the current treasurer, to put them to work, that's what they get paid for, okay? That's, you're the chairman of Streets, so you do that, 'cause most certainly if I was the chairman of Streets, like I would be if I had my correct seniority, I would be going after that. All right, so, it is interesting to me, and this is why I tell you I think this is so petty, and I've told you this, and it's revengable, because you're not doing your main gig, you're over here doing your side gig with a, and then you tell me, oh, well, you do that. You're the chair, and if you can't do that job, let me do it, 'cause I guarantee you, Nick Young and the rest of the people over at Streets, which I was on Streets all the years I was here until I was removed, I guarantee you're on Streets.
Alderman from twenty-third, please state your point of order.
What does the Refuge Division have to do with what we're talking about? That's so far off the subject, has nothing to do with it. I would like to actually call the question, it's getting kinda out there.
Well, point of order well taken. Alderwoman, please keep your comments directly related to Board Bill one ninety. You were talking about, you know, trash pickup and all those other things, but keep it, keep it based on one night.
I used to be chairman of the Streets talking about, and why you own business, not because of the government.
I know, but, but, but that can be-
But you can't take the court, that's the thing about what you say, so.
Okay.
You can't take the court, but still that doesn't mean that we were on here, so I say it, and then that's the point of order.
All right, please proceed, Alderman.
So, it is your contention that by the city getting more money, that's the only fair way to do it? And so let me understand this, so is it your contention that the treasurer has to pay for operating the Parking Division out of her funds versus out of the city funds, is that what you're saying?
The parking operations are paid for out of the parking operation funds, which is the Parking Meter Fund.
Mm-hmm, and so if we're paying for the Parking Division, so these things that she is using, she's depreciating, are these things, are these assets that she uses to administer the Parking Division?
Yes.
So why wouldn't you depreciate? So you're saying then, if she can't depreciate until afterwards, she has to somehow pay for that money out of something else, when, now, I own business, and you do too. You don't depreciate the cost of doing business from your taxes, is that what you're saying?
Alderwoman, if you generate ten million dollars at the end of the year, regardless of depreciation, it's still ten million dollars, and we get to split ten million dollars. We don't get to split it after depreciation, so that's just nonsense.
No, it's not nonsense, I, you did, again, didn't ask my, ask my question.
We're not talking about-
Are you, are you saying that it is wrong for a business, which the Parking Commission is a subsection of a business, to take the actual cost of doing business from a depreciation from the funds in which they're doing the business?
I'm gonna respond to that question by putting it in context. So if you and I are in business together, we're fifty fifty partner, and we generate ten million dollars at the end of the year, cash, you and I will split five million, five million. You and I also will file an income tax statement, which allows us to take depreciation off. Once we take that depreciation off, you split fifty percent of depreciation, I split fifty percent of depreciation. So therefore, our tax given back to the city, county and state is less.
So I will disagree with that, it will depend on how we have our, what we have set up, if it's a corporation, it's an S corporation, it's a partnership, it's a sole proprietary, so it's different ways-
Well, right now, it's a Parking Meter Fund.
Wait, 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 I'll let you finish, thank you. So there are different ways, and again, back to different standards of how you do depreciation, depending on a lot of different things, okay? But if I'm running a business, you and I are in partnership, I'm depreciating before we decide, oh, this is the surplus, this is our profits, I'm taking all the depreciation out of doing the cost of business. That is not, you do not do it and say, wait, and then let's wait, and then we're gonna say this is our profit and then take it out. That's not how you do it.
Okay, may I ask you a question?
And that's why it hasn't been done all of this time.
May I respond to that?
No, you may not, okay? So, let me ask you this question, so.
You can't ask me any more questions, if you don't want me to ask you a question.
I ain't mad at you, that's fine, that's fine. I have stood here for the longest period of time, I have a minor in accounting, I've listened to the Alderman talk about, oh, that's not fair, and that's cheating, and using those inflammatory words. I've talked to the Alderman himself about that, why I thought this was proceeding. And the reason why I talked about the streets or other things is because this city has so much waste, and I wish every chair would use the enthusiasm that the Alderman from the twenty-second, including, I wish he would do it in his main gig, of going after all the waste that we have. And we could start with all the tax abatement tips and all the other things that we have. We don't. We're using this as a vindictive little petty, get back at, I'm going to, and I'm gonna couch it in all these terms of, that it's something else, but at the end of the day, it is not something else, it is a way to get back and take power, and it is ridiculous, it is not anything that has to be done this way, to couch it in, well, the only way you can do depreciation is this way, it's just not true. You come in here and say it all, you do depreciation in a different way, and if it was something that was illegal the way she was doing it, then we oughta be looking at not only her, but the prior treasurer is doing something illegal and looking at that a different way. We should've been suing under the law and saying, this is not how you do it, okay? He's suing now, the Alderman is saying that the actual Parking Commission is not legal under the state statutes and run that way and shouldn't be under the treasurer, which, when, if that, if he wins that, then he will not be able.
Alderman, please state your point of order.
I'm gonna ask that the Alderwoman from the first, keep her comments germane to Board Bill one ninety, period.
All right.
The lawsuit has nothing to do with Board Bill one ninety.
Alderwoman, that's a point, point of order well taken. Alderwoman, please keep your comments, germane to- Alderwoman, hold, no, hold on, hold on, say, Alderwoman? Alder, 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 okay. Alderwoman? Okay, we're gonna move on, we're gonna move on. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Any further discussion on, on board, on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill one ninety? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just wanna clear up a few things. Number one, when you get through, I don't care what accounting method, system that you use, revenue that you generate for your business at the end of the day is what it is. If your bank account shows ten million dollars, when you get through taking away a depreciation, it's still gonna show ten million dollars. Number two, I've never said what's being done in the Parking Commission is illegal. I've never said what the treasurer's doing is illegal. As far as people want to make an assumption that I'm carrying this for somebody else, this is about the City of St. Louis. There are people out here that wanna make this personal. I'm very saddened and disappointed the Alderwoman from the first wanted to make this personal. This is not personal, this is not a tack on a black woman, period, dot. This is about facts, this is about good policy, this is about good government. I don't understand how anybody in good conscience can argue with the fact that if you can find a way to move more money to the General Revenue Fund, that that's a bad practice. It's just illogical for me, it makes no sense. We've raised taxes on our citizens, yes, we've raised refuse fees.
Alderwoman, please, please-
If you wanna just talk about Board Bill one ninety, don't talk about the taxes, talk about closing it, and about Board Bill one ninety.
Point of order well taken. All right, so it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, second by Alderman from the twenty-third, that we third read and final pass Board Bill one ninety. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Eighteen, aye votes, seven, no votes, one, present.
By a vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the twenty-second, third read and finally pass Board Bill one ninety.
That's the extent of third reading, report of engrossment and final passage.
Report of, report of enrollment.
Board Bills two oh eight, two oh nine and one ninety.
All other business being suspended, president shall in open session affix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. heretofore to the end that these may become law. Alderman from the eighteenth. Alderman from the, Alderman from twenty-second, you recognize on the motion for the Courtesy Resolutions Calendar.
The President, I move for adoption of our Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
Move, move by Alderman from twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from tenth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Dispense with line item twenty-one, second reading, Resolutions.
Reso, the following resolution was reported out of the Parks Commission meeting, uh, Resolution one forty-six, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, approval of the Parks and Environmental Matters Committee of the Neighborhood Parks Capital Improvement Account Annual Budget pursuant to ordinance six nine three seven two regarding the proceeds of the three sixteenth cent tax.
Alderman from twenty-six, you recognize on the second read of Resolution one forty-six.
Yes, Mr. President. This, uh, resolution is funding that we'll receive for the parks throughout the city of St. Louis in each ward. So this is a mechanism when it comes to matching funds, where any project that you may have within the parks in your neighborhood, this is a wherewithal where you can receive the funding with matching funds with the City of St. Louis Park Division and Board of Public Service.
All right. Alderman, would you like to make motion for the adoption of Resolution one forty-six?
I move that we pass Resolution one forty-six.
Been moved by Alderman from twenty-six, seconded by Alderman from twenty-fifth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Resolution one forty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, approval by the Parks and Environmental Matters Committee of the Neighborhood Parks Capital Improvement Account Annual Budget pursuant to ordinance six four nine nine four regarding the proceeds of the one tenth cent tax.
Alderman from twenty-six, you recognize on the second read and the Resolution one forty-seven.
Yes, Mr. President, um, members of the board. Basically, this is just another line item for park improvement, so, uh, this is a lot similar to one forty-six, so I renew my motion.
All right, you'd like, well, you'll need to make a separate motion for this.
I make a motion to pass out Resolution one forty-seven.
Been moved by Alderman from twenty-six, and twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-seventh, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Resolution one forty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, approval by the Parks and Environmental Matters Committee of the Neighborhood Park Fund Annual Budget pursuant to ordinance six seven four seven seven.
Alderman from the twenty-six, you recognize on the second read of Resolution one forty-eight.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, basically the same as one forty-six, one forty-seven, same type of line item for park improvement, so I move to pass out Resolution one forty-eight.
Been moved by Alderman from twenty-six, seconded by Alderman from twenty-fifth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Resolution one six nine, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Vacaro and Alderman Mohammed. The Board of Aldermen register our support for the prompt initiation of a comprehensive, independent financial audit of the city.
Alderman from twenty-third, you recognize on the second read and the Resolution one sixty-nine, as amended.
So we've been in, actually, a couple few committee meetings over this. This calls for an audit of all of the offices in the city, county, everyone's comprehensive. Uh, the paying part, part, can be paid over a two or three-year period of time. This needs to be on the state auditor's desk this week, so we can find out and move on with this. It's my belief, and I know Kamala X did something on this, it's my belief, we can move forward with this, and we should, so, uh, I would ask that we pass out Resolution number one sixty-nine. I would also say that anybody wants to add their name, please let the assistant clerk know.
So you'd like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we pass Board Bill one sixty...
Resolution, Resolution.
I mean, I'm sorry, Resolution number one sixty-nine, as amended, out with the...
Been moved by Alderman from twenty-third, seconded by Alderman from twenty-first, any further discussion? Alderwoman from first.
Mr. President, members of the board, if the alderman from the twenty-third would yield?
Alderman, twenty...
They have no intention to yield all the question and move this forward.
The alderman from twenty-third has refused to yield, so you can, please...
And so he can't call the question because he didn't have the floor?
Yeah, he does, I'm a floor.
Know the rules. Uh, thank you very much. I rise in, uh, I rise...
Alderwoman, you know, please...
I rise in opposition to this appropriation. And the reason why I rise in opposition of this appropriation is not 'cause I'm scared of an audit, be, in fact, the people who are out carrying the thing, I act, the petition, I signed it and said, that'll be fine, if the people have enough votes and want us and compel us to do it. I do know that an appropriation should go through the ways and means, that's what our charter requires. When I hear the alderman from the twenty-third get up and talk about, we could pay this in two or three years, um, and we haven't got any appropriation from the very board that you sit on, the Board of E and A. The city charter is very specific about how we spend monies. And also, there's case law that says that if we spend money, and it hasn't gone through the proper procedures, let me just quote this to you, it says, "The board is not liable for funds illegally spent," since the board's merely, so, they have a, 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 a city councilor's opinions back with, uh, when Mayor Pelkport was the mayor back in nineteen sixty-two. So if the auditor goes out and spends this money, I'm gonna send her this copy of this along with our charter, saying that before she does anything, that she should ask how we are gonna pay for that. And for the alderman to get up and say, well, we can pay for this two, in two or three years, makes no sense, according to the charter. It is a unnecessary expenditure of monies. Just got through talking about how we don't have, and we need all this other money, it's not something the citizens are compelling us to do. And it is, uh, somehow thinking that we can appropriate money, not through the charter, and not through our ordinance, and not through, uh, the Board of E and A, but we can merely go through and do a resolution, and then talk about, oh, well, we can do this. If we do not have a proper appropriations, this is not anything except for what it is, a resolution asking her, uh, to do this. And that is why, when I checked with why we got back the city council's opinion, it said, well, yeah, you can ask, she doesn't have to do it. And if I, and, and to go further, if I were her, I would not do it without specific funding put in place, because otherwise, she will expend an exorbitant amount of money with no way and no enforcement mechanism. And case law that says that the city does not have to pay this fund. Uh, you cannot appropriate money through a resolution. It is unnecessary. I thought the alderwoman from the twentieth had a very much more, uh, correct way to do things. We've already had a, 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 an audit on several occasions. Why, why don't we have reports about what's working and what's not? Then if we did a targeted, uh, inquiry about, uh, things that are not doing, being done correctly, that would be the way you would do it, not to just keep doing audits over and over and over again. And then if you do nothing about it, it'd be like our city plans, you could stand on it, instead of being five-eleven, I could be seven-two, with the amount of city plans that we did, or the amount of other, other kind of things we expended money. This is taxpayer dollar. And, um, if we pass this out, I will write to the auditors, telling her that she really should question where we're gonna get the money to pay for it, and ask that it be appropriated before she spends a dime on it. And I would ask that the Board of E and A, if this is gonna happen, then you ought to get a ordinance through here, you guys should meet and appropriate the money correctly. If you don't do that, we have no business asking the auditor to do something that we have no way to pay for, and, and that she cannot even come to court and demand that it be paid for.
All the one from fourteen.
Would the alderman from the twenty-third yield for a question?
Alderman from twenty-third, will you yield for question to the alderwoman from the fourteen?
No, I'm gonna stay consistent, and...
But that's, you, you don't, you don't have the floor.
Okay, I would just like to make the comment, we had, in the committee, in the legislative committee, we had asked that the mayor's office and, and other offices bring forth data of what had been performed, what, what directions were given in the past audit that was completed in twenty-ten, were, um, actually acted upon. And I was wanting to know if we would hold a meeting to, to find, have those findings also. Um, again, I, this is a tricky question and a tricky, uh, resolution. The city is strapped for money, as the alderwoman from the first said. Um, we're, uh, really not sure what the audit will bring about. Uh, I don't think it will find anything other than what we found in the ten audit, but I think we do, as responsible legislators, need to look for efficiencies and, and making efficiencies in the government, and we have a map before us from the twenty-ten audit. Um, I will vote for this because of the optics, um, but I, I do have concerns about adding more of a fiscal burden to the city budget, and maybe having to cut back services to pay for an audit that may not grant us information, any more information than we already have before us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from twenty-first.
President, I rise in support of this resolution. Uh, you know, during my short time being here at the board, we continue to talk about fiscal responsibility and transparency. Well, we have it in this resolution, but yet we refuse to pass it because of logistics and formalities. The state auditor said in a letter that she communicated back to the board, that in order for her to conduct an audit of the city, all we have to do is pass a board bill or a resolution. That was her exact words to us. So unless we're saying that the, uh, state auditor is wrong in her assumption, then that's the only thing that we should be debating. But I think that we need to pass this resolution. We need to have this comprehensive audit, and we need to figure out exactly where dollars are going in the city, so we can provide vital city services to the neighborhoods that need it the most, like my ward, which needs it the most, and other wards in North St. Louis, and some wards in South City. Uh, going back and forth over, over who's gonna pay for it and when, I think that it's almost a little ridiculous, uh, considering the fiscal status of our city. Uh, I would ask that we pass this resolution out immediately, uh, so we can support transparency and fiscal accountability.
All right, thank you. Alderman from twenty-second.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to ask if the alderwoman from the fifteenth would yield for question?
Alderman from fifteen, will you yield for question to the alderman from twenty-second?
Yes.
Alderman from twenty-second, please proceed.
Good morning, Alderwoman. Um, you're a part of initiative petition to collect signatures to demand that the state auditor audit the city of St. Louis, correct?
Correct.
And approximately how much did your team calculate that it would cost?
Um, the state auditor gave us, uh, a ballpark figure between one point two million and one point seven five million.
And who would have to pay for that?
Uh, the city would have to pay for that.
And how would we, is there a special fund, or...
We would have to find the money in city government and pass an appropriations.
And do we have a choice?
Uh, we do not have a choice.
Okay, thank you, Alderwoman.
All right. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderwoman from first.
Mr. President, the alderwoman from fifteenth will yield.
Alderman from fifteen, will you?
Sure.
Alderman from first, please proceed.
Um, so, and the way, uh, thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. President. So Alderwoman, so the way that this happens, that you are doing an initiative petition, is because that is provided in what, the charter?
It is provided under state law.
Okay. And, um, you, you do know the charter also allows us to do initiative? Did you know that?
Correct, yes. This isn't, um, this isn't an initiative, though, to put something on a ballot, it's simply, this is the state auditor's process...
Okay.
Um, to be able to request an audit.
Okay. And so are you familiar with the letter that we got from the state auditor?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and in that letter, um, and I don't have it before me, but I remember it pretty good, and the state auditor said that there are several ways that you could have the state auditor come in and do an audit, is that correct?
Correct.
Um, she did mention about resolutions, but that was on, in, in a broader sense that, that was an answer for the way that the state law read, right? Is that correct?
Correct, so the...
It didn't say, it didn't say the city of St. Louis could do a resolution and appropriate money that way.
Correct. Her wording was that some city charters give, uh, bodies such as ours the ability to request, uh, an audit via resolution or ordinance. It did not specify whether our city charter, um, actually allows for that.
So then, that would mean that we would have to go and look in our city charter and see where it allows for that, right?
Correct.
Um, are you familiar with a budget and appropriation process of our city charter?
I am.
Um, I think the alderman from twenty-first wore, talked about all those rules, those little rules we're talking about are charters and ordinances and laws that we ourselves make, right?
Correct.
And we are directed to follow the city charters, is that not correct?
That is correct.
And in, um, the city charter, when it talks about appropriation, are you familiar with the fact that it says to appropriate money, that it has to go through a process?
Yes.
Do you find any place that are, and do you know of, and you may not, of any process that says that you can do, uh, a resolution to appropriate money?
No.
Um, I went through it, I've been going through it over and over since it started, looking for something, because that's what I asked the alderman from the twenty-third the first time, how are we going to spend this money? Where does it say we can appropriate this money? So it does say in our city charters that you can appropriate money, uh, through ordinances and through a budget, and, and then it has to go to E and A, and it has to be approved, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, um, if the alderwoman from the fourteenth would yield, please?
Alderwoman from the fourteenth, will you yield to question to the alderwoman from the first? Alderwoman from the fourteenth? Uh, will you yield to question to the alderwoman from the first?
Yes.
Alderwoman from the first, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, you are on legislative committee, is that correct?
That's true.
And when this bill, when this, uh, resolution came before you, I'm sorry, you said that you all had asked that something come from the mayor's office, is that what you said?
Um, the mayor's office volunteered to, they are doing, uh, an assessment, I guess, or they've asked for all the departments that were audited in the ten audit to deliver to them, uh, the, the, I guess, changes that were made, that were dictated by that au- audit.
Since the last audit?
Since the last audit. And at that time, I guess it's been, what, two weeks ago, that they, uh, represented it from the mayor's office, said they would bring those forward soon, anytime we asked. They were, they had some, and they were gathering the rest. So that was my question to the alderman from the twenty-third, was, you know, we need to have that information. And I think that will dictate to us of some recommendations, and maybe some solid, uh, plans of action on the information we already have before us. Uh, again, I think it's being more fiscally responsible to do that than to call for spending another two million dollars with maybe getting the same information that we already have before us, because sometimes the, the money isn't there to make some of those changes. So I, you know, this kind of puts us in a bad light. We, if we don't support it, we look like we're trying to hide something, because people think that, you know, doing an audit is going to deliver some findings of misappropriation of money. Um, that, that may deliver that, but most of the time, it just goes through and looks at the numbers, and the numbers add up, everything's fine. So I, I really, you know, knowing and having been in this position, I, I would like to rather look at how we're spending money and where we could find efficiencies, rather than going back and doing the same thing over and over and getting the same result. And I think somebody said that that's a sign of...
(laughing)
...being mentally deficient. So, uh, you know, my, I, I will, again, because the optics of not voting for an audit could be detrimental, because people twist words. Um, it's, it's innocuous, it's a resolution, there's no law being passed here. Uh, probably, if the people continue to gather signatures, it may be, it may be put upon us anyway. And either which way, um, we still have to come up with the two million dollars to conduct the audit. So if we don't have the money, we can't really do the audit anyway. But I think as a responsible legislator, we need to look at the inefficiencies in our government and try to amend those, rather than moving forward and spending more money, throwing good money after bad, as my mother would say, to get the same result.
So, a question, so when you were having the hearing, did they bring in the results of the last audit from two thousand and ten? Was that part of the conversation?
We had those put before us, yes.
Okay.
But we haven't gotten, uh, what, in other words, each department has done with those. Some of them, we had pieces, bits and pieces, but not a comprehensive...
Because what I'm saying is, if you build from the last audit, which if that was before you, and it says, oh, well, X, Y, and Z are doing a really good job and following everything, but A, B, and C, they're really messing up...
Exactly.
Then why would you be auditing X, Y, and Z and spending the extra money? Because I would say that to even the people carrying the petition, because, uh, the charter does allow for us, uh, as citizens, to force this board to do something. But for the, us, this board, to go and do it when we don't even know the outcome, and, and, so I want to compliment the mayor...
Many of us know the outcome of the last audit.
Right, but we don't know the outcome of what's happened since.
Exactly.
And I want to compliment the mayor, because that is exactly, because she's accountant, that is exactly...
Where I... Where I would start.
The right way to do it, say, okay, I'm new, so here's the audit, here's what happened, here's what they said, let me see what's good, what's bad. What's bad, okay, I don't have a problem. Even if we were going to do a targeted, limited audit of those things that were not correct, we're not doing a good job, but when we're going to audit somebody that maybe was doing a fantastic job, that's really just a waste of money. It's a feel-good legislation. It makes people think that you're doing something, but in this time when we don't have money.
Well, and and all of our departments are audited by professional auditors annually anyway.
Okay.
You know, they all call in an auditor and they're all audited to make sure that there's no misappropriation, that nobody's walking home with money in their pockets. So, you know, what we're going to find is probably more of the same.
And so was were the audits of any of the departments brought forth in this conversation that you had at legislation?
No, not yet.
So.
I mean, all of them were presented to us, we were allowed to read them, but then we haven't gotten the update of what what has been.
No, I'm just saying, so from like 2015, or 16, rather, did were any of the audits from different departments?
Oh, you mean from the private auditing companies? No, no.
Okay, so we don't know what they said.
Right.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I rise in opposition of this resolution. The Alderwoman from the 14th put it very succinctly. It is just a optics kind of thing and it is something that says, oh, we're going to go do this. You cannot do any such thing without you can't appropriate the money, you cannot appropriate money from a resolution. I don't care what Alderman thinks you can, you cannot. We can vote for this all we want to, we can tell the people we voted for something, but we're really voting to waste money. Now that I hear the Alderwoman from the 14th, I would even say to the people carrying the petition, maybe we need to look at a different way to doing it, okay? Sometimes I'm not thinking, I signed the petition, but now I'm thinking, do we really need to audit all of the departments, okay? We are, we do have a finite amount of money and we need to be careful with it. And I don't have a problem if somebody's wasting money and spending money. We've had occasions before in this board when we had, the city courts was bleeding cash so much, we never could determine how much money was stolen when they were doing a cash only basis. So most certainly we need to keep up with our money, but auditing every department and trying to appropriate 1.2 to 1.75 million dollars when we don't know the outcome of anybody has improved what they're supposed to do or if they're doing a better job is just not a good idea for me and it's not a good sign of being fiscal, fiscally responsible. And it's different when the Alderwoman from 22nd asked the Alderwoman from the 15th, well, you carry that petition and you'd have to find the money. That's when the citizens are demanding. That's why it's a long, arduous process in which the citizens have to, you have to get out there and get the citizens to say that's okay. It's not for us who know that there's a different way to do it, to just try to do something when we don't have a legal way to appropriate the money. And therefore, I rise in opposition to Resolution 169 as amended.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 23rd, you recognize to close.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 169 as amended, as well as the petition that is out there, both require us to come up with the money. What this does is the people that are out there trying to gather those signatures, the reason we did this is to try to help them to get this through. We didn't cut anybody, we didn't cut any state offices. The money has to be appropriated either way. Glad to hear that the Alderwoman from the first is rescinding her name from their petition. I'm sorry, Alderwoman is rescinding her name from their petition. I know that there's enough people out there that feel we should go through with this audit. At the time that the audit took place in 2010, we did not have the police department as a city department. So they were not part of the 2010 audit. This calls from everyone. I close on this, I'm not going to go on. We've talked about it way too long. I would recommend anybody that wants to put their name on this and show where you are for transparency to have the clerk add your name. And I close and ask for a due pass on this.
It's been moved. It's been moved by Alderwoman from 23rd and seconded by Alderwoman from the 25th, 21st that we adopt Resolution 169 as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderwoman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderwoman Moore?
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderwoman Kotar?
Aye.
Alderwoman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderwoman Volmer? Alderwoman Martin?
Aye.
Alderwoman Honowitz?
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Green?
Aye.
Alderwoman Oldenberg?
Aye.
Alderwoman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderwoman Kennedy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Vaccaro?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ogilvy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Cone?
Aye.
Alderwoman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook? Alderwoman Volmer? 24, I vote one, no vote, one present.
By your vote, you stay in the motion. Alderwoman from the 23rd and adopted Resolution 169 as amended.
That's the extent of third of second reading of resolutions.
Ms. Lanis, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, January the 15th, the offices closed. Tuesday, Tuesday, January the 16th, Streets and Traffic Refuge Committee meeting at 9:00 a.m. in the leisure room. Thursday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, January the 17th, Public Safety Committee meeting at 11:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Legislation meeting at 6:30 p.m. That's 6:30 p.m. in the Kennedy Room. Thursday, we have a Transportation and Commerce Committee meeting at 10:00 a.m. Friday, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 27th.
Mr. President, I'd like to announce a correction. In the 2018 calendar events, they have Throwing and Groin Foundation for January the 20th. That's for today. That event is happening today, it is not the 20th. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of it.
Okay, thank you.
Page 56.
All right. Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 4th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. As you guys know, I've been in the hospital throughout the holiday. Facebook had me dead, so if so if I'm dead, we're all dead.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm here to protect the Fourth Ward history and I will be here until the Fourth Ward history is fully protected. I have a Fourth Ward progress report because I was in the hospital. On Thanksgiving, I gave away 550 turkeys with baskets. Brown and Crouppen, Demetrius Johnson Foundation and Martin's Market was part of my sponsors. 550 turkeys with baskets and Leroy Grant was one from Central Baptist Church that gave us some of the baskets. Reason why I'm telling you this, I'm telling you the reason why I'm in the hospital. I sit in a room ice cold distributing those turkeys to my constituents. On December the 20th, we had 16, we had breakfast with Santa. We fed over 250 children, gave them fruit, took pictures with Santa, gave them a bag of toys. The carpenters gave me coats to give each one of those children coats, put coats on their back. And the Marines gave me toys and we gave away baskets and bicycles. They were the ones that gave me the pneumonia and the flu. The little kids, I love them and they sit on my knee and talk to me and wipe their little snotty noses on my pants. And I ended up with pneumonia and the flu in the hospital for the holiday, but we liked it, we loved it, to see their little smiling faces and make sure that they were happy. So that's why, don't count me out if you, don't count me out until you give me the count of 10. I will be in the Fourth Ward until the history is complete and that the people of the Fourth Ward have a better quality of life. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman, at the New Year's, the New Year's Eve event where you come to give words and comfort to families who have lost loved ones all across our city that have been shot and killed or murdered in our city, the Alderman was sitting next to me in the pool pit and I looked over and he had left the hospital, showed up still with his IVs in to make sure that he was there for those families and then left there and went right back to the hospital, checked himself out. That's the kind of commitment. So I want to thank you on behalf of the city of St. Louis, Alderman. Alderwoman from the first?
President, members of the Board, over the holidays, I saw something that's not in the first ward, but for many years I lived in South St. Louis and I saw the Alderwoman from the 16th and I heard about J.C. Penney's closing. And for me, that is very sad because I've watched all of the department stores from the city of St. Louis slowly, one at a time, leave. Sticks, Bears, Fuller slash Dillard's. I lived in South St. Louis when there was still a Macy's at Chippewa and King and South Kings Highway. And I often went to Hampton Village to go to the J.C. Penney's there, which I really do think was a good thing because you can actually go there and actually touch some physically some of the things and you also could do the catalog ordering there. So for me to hear about J.C. Penney's leaving, we don't have any more traditional department stores in the city of St. Louis. The Alderman gave a very good speech and and he's right about it was a business decision and I know that they will get somebody there without a problem, but it is just sad that our fair city doesn't have a traditional department store. That was the last little hold, holdout. And I thought it was a good, it was a good compromise because they didn't have to have a large store. They had a small store, but you still could go over there and you could try, touch some things and you could order things from the catalog and then you could come and pick it up. And I think that they had added that now you could call in and do online and then just pick it up there. And that's what Amazon is going to. And I'm really sad that we are in pursuit of all the big, large box things at the expense of, and I know J.C. Penney's is not a small little mom and pop, but I've grown up with Sears, J.C. Penney's and some other things. And I feel that it is very sad and I'm very sad that the community is going to lose that because there are seniors that are not on the internet like some of the young people. And I know that in that community, it's been a valued business and I am sad for the city of St. Louis that we're losing our last traditional department store.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman from the 22nd?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to give a shout out to some of our colleagues who have celebrated birthdays. We have Alderman Larry Honowitz and Frank Williamson on the 2nd of January. Happy Lady Birthday. And happy birthday tomorrow to Alderman Volmer, who happens to share my birthday as well.
Oh, happy birthday to you too, Alderman. Alderwoman from the 21st?
Mr. President, everyone knows about the freezing cold weather we've been having over the past two weeks. And a church in my ward was gracious enough to open their doors, St. Peter's Church located at 4730 Margarita, under the great leadership of Pastor Stephen Shepherd. And he has decided to reopen his doors as of today, but we need volunteers to come out. He does have an older congregation, so most of them cannot stay up all night and watch our houseless or homeless population so they can have a secure and safe and warm environment. So we do need volunteers to come out. Again, that address is 4730 Margarita Avenue. Thank you.
All right. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? And I have to commend the pastor and also your sisters, your sister and others who have been involved. I mean, they set up an operation and it is very timely and I want to thank them for doing it also. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Mr. President, may I introduce some guests?
Please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to introduce two guests from the Fountain Park neighborhood in the 18th Ward, Ms. Pat Miller, who is to my right, and Richard Ellis, who's also to my right.
Please stand, please stand. Thank you for coming out today. Please proceed, Alderman.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move that the Alderwoman from the 19th be